All right, it is six o'clock. This is Robert Stevenson. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of Southwood Talley Grand Regional School District School Committee. First thing I want to do is just make sure this meeting is going to be recorded. Is there anybody else here who is going to be recording this meeting?
Peter Curry, what's the news?
Thank you, Peter. All right, so we're going to go to opening ceremony. If I can ask everybody to stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, secretary's report. We have the minutes from our September 21st meeting. Can I get a motion to enter the minutes?
So much. Second.
Anybody have any questions or concerns about the minutes from the meeting on the 21st? No questions? We'll do a real call vote to accept the minutes. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yeah.
Pat?
Yes.
And Erica?
Yes.
And Rob is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero. Okay, warrants. We've already, we know that they're out here, Amy. I think they're already signed. Correspondence, Ms. Superintendent Willard, do we have anything in correspondence this week?
Yes, I have two pieces of correspondence. I received an email today from the state. Every few years we go through what they call a tiered focus monitoring on our civil rights and our special education. And they were, informed me today that we will be undergoing another review during the 2022-2023 school year. So I just want to let you know that we will be starting that process. And I'm going to a webinar with Jenny Sullivan and Robin Gunn later, early December or late November. And then we also received a letter from Kathleen Coggi, that we have two student of the month at LPVEC. And they are in the 10th grade and 12th grade. And they will be doing a ceremony for them on October 12th at 12:30. So you are all invited to attend. I will be going for this, our student of the month.
Do they know that they won this?
Yes, they get this.
And who are the students?
I do not have the names of the students right now.
Secret.
You have to go to find out?
You have to go to find out. All right. Fantastic. Before we go, I just want to welcome Erica Emlyn, who is our newest school committee member. She was appointed last week in Southwood to replace Jess Term. So welcome, Erica.
Thank you.
And we are now going to go to our first public comment. Anyone wishing to make a public comment here this evening, just let me know. Raise your hand. We have a podium here. We have three minutes that you can speak. Anybody looking to be, excuse me? So you can just come up the podium, say your name and where you live, and then you've got three minutes to have a conversation.
I'm joined there. We are here to manage to address the equities for its home schools. So in regards to getting that from taking part in homeschool sports. Jesse is a homeschool student in the Southwood position under the direction of Superintendent Willis. Willis has approved their curriculum. All these Southwood schools district's credit plan titled diversity equity inclusion and belonging. As a student's sense of belonging is critical to academic success. The district will foster a sense of belonging and partnership among students, staff, and families. They're all members of the school community feel socially connected, supported, and respected. So Jesse is a homeschool, is a Southwood school student.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to address for public comments? Okay, thank you. Next, we have student advisory report.
So this month at school, I'm actually doing the announcements every day, which is fun, so I always know what's going on. Um, today in sports, everybody had a match, I believe, or a game. Cross country just had their little senior meet. It went well. There were nice decorations. They had pizza afterwards. Boys soccer had an away game. Girls soccer had a home game. Field hockey had an away game. We are actually waiting on another student representative off of the field hockey team. She's coming here tonight. She just left her game a little early. And then golf also had a match. Volleyball played yesterday. Their game wasn't postponed. Every day in school, we've been doing, the Spanish club has been having a contest. They ask a question and then students are allowed to stop. There's a desk in the hallway and you can write your answer and submit it. And then the winner gets a prize. I've never taken Spanish. I was always taking French, so I do not participate in this. But the question today was, how do you say United States in Spanish? I didn't know that.
I took French. I didn't know it either.
Clubs are up and running. Student council had their elections. I'm president this year. We're having our first meeting on Thursday morning. New Horizons had their first meeting today after school. Girls who code had their first meeting today after school. Sad Club met yesterday. That was fun. We're doing a bulletin board for the bullying prevention month. There's a lot of groups actually supporting discrimination or unity against discrimination month. October 20th, I believe, is the day. We're trying to think of some positive ways where we can embrace this inside of the school. In New Horizons, we were talking about maybe making some ribbons to hand out. Maybe everyone wear orange, something to promote diversity and inclusivity. Drama Club is having auditions next week, or tomorrow, actually. So what else? For sophomores, the Hugh Bryan Youth Leadership Seminar is going on. And then for more students, the PSAT is running. Connections is a group in Southwood that was formed last year among students and teachers with Mr. Pescatelli, Ms. Latender, and Ms. Anderson, all as supervisors. They had a, they called it a field trip. Someone came in and they're all actually getting ADL certified, both students and the staff that came in. I am in the club, but I didn't participate because I was out on a concussion. I missed too many days of school. But I'm sure I can get more information if you want to know how that went. The last day of it is tomorrow. So everybody goes to the auditorium and they get taught. And I believe it's some inclusive certification that they gained from it. Progress reports came out last Friday. I believe the upgrades are closing. I guess it's halfway done, so next month or two. It's going by pretty fast, but that's all I got for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. For the record, the superintendent didn't know what the United States was in Spanish.
Senior parking. That was a big. I have pictures and videos I would love to share, maybe after, just for your own enjoyment. There's plenty of stuff up on the Instagram. All the spots came out great. It was just such a fun time. I stayed from 12 to 4:30 just because I was working so hard the whole entire time. But it was just a great environment and it was so fun for us to be able to do that. And even coming into the school on Monday, it wasn't a nice day. It rained all day yesterday. But so many, there were a lot of compliments and it was just such a positive environment. I was like, oh my goodness, your spot looks so good. Great work. That kind of thing. So it was really fun.
Awesome.
And it's easier to find where you're supposed to park.
That's true. A lot of teachers actually steal kids.
That's what I heard. You might have to have like a student ticket issue, something like that, right?
There were tickets. We made, every person was in their assigned spot.
What do you mean? The teacher parks in your spot?
They get to.
They get a ticket.
Some students took their little wipers and.
Yeah, I could say I attended Saturday just to, you know, see how it was going. And it was just a great atmosphere. Everybody was just having so much fun. Yeah, the music was crank. Mr. Pescatelli was the water boy. He was filling up jugs and he was doing like, it was fun.
The water boy.
Well, you know, like they needed to. He really is. He really is. Like it was such a fun guy. Everybody's helping each other and critiquing their work.
But I mean, the expectations, I mean, you think, how hard is it to paint a thing? The class officers stayed after in prime for three days straight. Like they stayed till nine o'clock on Friday night just getting it ready because it was a lot of work getting all that primer down. And it was hard to find volunteers because a lot of the people play sports or in academic clubs, but they really came out great. If you ever have a time where you know people won't be at the school, just take a drive and look at them because we really do have some talent up there.
And some of that pavement was pretty, you know, broken up. So some of the spots were harder than others. Yeah, I looked at the pictures.
All right. Thank you, Annette. So we have a number of educational presentations tonight. You're going to start with Ms. Mahoney. Is she here? Hi there. You want to come and give us a, some background on a trip that you guys are looking to do in the next year or so?
Sure. Thank you, everyone. How's everybody doing?
So we need to bring Mr. List next time so I can speak French.
So, um, so this is my biannual, although COVID kind of messed everything up. But my appeal to do another trip with students, they have always been successful. I started in, what, 2008, I think was my first trip with, with Southwood Town Regional School. And, and I'm happy to continue doing it if you agree. And this year we're hoping to do Peru. Really would love to see Machu Picchu. That's a big one on this trip. And the price is pretty consistent with some of the European trips. It's almost as far, if not a little bit farther actually, than like going to Spain. There is some inter-flight issues, which I've never had before. But to get from the capital to Machu Picchu, so there's a domestic flight within Peru. So I think that that also kind of adds to the price a little bit. But really with the Andes Mountains, you can't really do a bus thing. So I'll take a flight and not go bouncing around. I've done that before, but I guess in Peru it's a little bit different. It's a nine-day trip. It's pretty typical. It's with the same company that I've used and we, the school district has used.
It's the same company that we're using for the European trips too, right?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I've been tag teaming with Janet Grunwald for years on this. And so I know she, you know, her trip is this coming spring to Italy. Hopefully, you know, all this COVID stuff is going to magically just, yeah, exactly.
I'm going.
Yeah.
My daughter's going too. She's very excited.
Yeah.
I mean. Yeah.
You can go. Especially if you make exceptions for school committee. You're always looking for, for chaperones, right?
It's true. Ted actually has come along a lot of the trips with us, so.
Ted has gone?
Yeah, I've gone on most of them.
Really?
And I'm planning to go on this one.
Wow. You can go with Ted.
You gotta pay. I've been to Italy. I could go there.
I lived in Italy. That was cool. Two years.
Yes. Yeah. That was the last trip that we did in 2018. Our 2020 trip got canceled when we were six weeks out. When.
I remember.
So all the work, all the work, and then, yeah.
I was horny.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at least they were able to move Italy still next year, right?
Yes, yes, yes. My issue was is that so many of them were seniors and there's only so many, how far out you can move it. So unfortunately, that just kind of opportunity disappeared, but hoping to try again this time.
Do you have an estimated participation number in terms of how many kids you think would be interested in this?
I don't, to be honest with you. I tend to find that the Latin American trips are a little bit lower in terms of participation. And then, then when I go to Spain, but not necessarily significantly lower. In 2016, I did Ecuador. And I think that group was around 21 or so, which is a little bit lower than my Spain trips, which were closer to 30. So, you know, that's typically what I expect between 20 to 30 people. But I'm hopeful that, you know, Machu Picchu is a big draw for a lot of people. So, you know, there might be more.
Is there a minimum that, that they need you to have?
No, I mean, yeah, I mean, they're pretty flexible. I mean, because we have such an established relationship with this company. I have found that they've been very, you know, willing to work with us on a lot of different things. But usually it's a minimum of six, but I don't see that as being a huge issue.
You got one. Ted's going and maybe Ryan. You might have got a third just for tonight.
There you go.
Are there special things with COVID being like those students?
I don't know at this point. You know, it, you know, we'll have to wait and see, you know? I mean, there could be, you know, issues with, I don't know that it would be an issue with the company mandating anything. I mean, you as a body could probably, if you felt comfortable wanting to mandate things. There might be country mandates that we would have to pay attention to. So I would think, you know, minimum, we might have to travel with either, you know, certification of vaccine or, or, you know, a negative test or something like that. But 18 months out, I would love to think that this is just going to be a bad dream, you know? Because it is 18 months out. And right now, the company is offering a $200 discount on the price. So that's why I'm coming a little bit even earlier than I typically do. I think that their profit margin, given everything, is going to be a lot narrower, so they're not going to offer this for very long. So I would love to be able to pass that savings on to students as quickly as possible. So as soon as I know that, i- if you agree, then, you know, I'll set up some sort of meeting, probably a Zoom meeting for families to be able to get this information out to them as quickly as possible so they can make a decision. There is a policy in place with the company this time that's new. And that is a, a period of time between now and February in which if families sign up now and for whatever reason, they decide that either they don't feel comfortable or, you know, their family situation has changed, either financially or whatever. They're able to drop and have zero penalty. They will get back every cent. So again, that's, you know, that's the benefit of signing up early too. Obviously, it spaces out the payments if they do a payment plan. But also there's a no penalty drop between now and February of 2020. So it's still a year out, but they'll have at least a six-month window between now and then. 22, yeah. So, yeah, because February next year, 2023, would be too close to the travel time. But if they purchase the insurance, then, you know, they are still able to get back most of it. You know, if they went to go that route too. But in this case, they're offering a zero penalty type of thing for, and for no particular reason.
I think the Attorney General.
Well, there, yes. COVID and everything. So, but yeah.
So if we approve this on our next meeting on the 19th, does that give you enough time? Or do you, or it's not on the agenda for tonight, but I don't know whether, looking around the room, whether anybody would.
I mean, I could make it work. I just don't know about giving families enough time to talk about it. Because I, I've never gone to, I've never presented a trip to students before. I've talked to you and gotten.
No, no, absolutely. You were saying on the timing on the discounted.
Yes, unfortunately, it's November 1st. I mean, I could do something quickly. But I don't know about families in terms of giving them enough time to be able to make those decisions.
In the past, we've had approval on these trips that the night that they've.
That's why, that's why I'm asking, because I noticed it's not on tonight as an action item. Amy, is that something that I can make an exception and we can vote on that this evening? Is there any reason why that can't happen? No, I'm just, I'm just wondering. What do you think, Superintendent? Think we could wing this?
Yeah.
How much of a down payment did they need to place before November 1st to guarantee that rate?
So, so typically it's a $95 deposit. Again, normally that would be non-refundable, but in this situation, it is refundable. And then after that, families typically, yes, families typically elect a payment plan. You could pick like the specific day of the month. And, you know, and obviously the quicker they sign up, the smaller the payments, right? Because, you know, it spreads it out.
And if they delay it, they just stretch it out even more like they did for Italy. It went down to like $39 a month, was left. It was crazy.
Oh, geez.
Now, are there any fundraising opportunities to help defray the costs?
Typically, yes. Once I get a group started, then I start offering, you know, fundraisers. Usually I would do something for the holidays. We usually typically sell popcorn for the, for the holidays. That's a really big one. They've been, the company that I use gives us a 50% profit on that. Usually we, it, it depends on the group. Honestly, I'll do as much or as little as the group wants. You know, some groups are very, very like, yep, we gotta, you know, you know, defray as much of these costs as that we possibly can. Great. Other groups have looked at me and they're like, nah, I'd just rather go work. Well, no, then like, I gotta go work a job and, you know, and then, you know, come out here and hustle. And that's fine too. So it really just depends on the group, but I'm always agreeable to whatever it is that they want to do.
Super. I think we might be able to help you out this evening.
That'd be awesome.
And you could have like stump the superintendent on Swedish words or something like that for fundraising. Are you good?
I'm, I'm good, unless you have any other questions that I can.
Anybody else have any questions? Nope. All right. Well, thank you for your, your report. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Sanchagrin, are you with us this evening?
How are you doing?
You're going to give us an update on the ice hockey co-op?
Yeah, every, yeah, every two years, the ice hockey co-op comes up. Question, we do continue with it just based on the number, we're pretty much exactly, I'm expecting to be exactly this year where we have been. 30, 32 kids in the hockey program, including the co-op kids. So we're looking to continue the already approved co-op with Westfield Technical Academy and Gateway. And I would like to add St. Mary's to that co-op. So that's two separate backgrounds or how that works out. But essentially, when we moved forward with the co-op, the last time St. Mary's was in the discussion. But they didn't have any hockey players at the time, so we decided not, not to make them part of the co-op at that point. They now do have a couple of hockey players and checking it up more in the next few years here. I think, basically, you know, we, we were part of the St. Mary's co-op, their team reported. Our, our hockey program kind of filled that gap in St. Mary's, and we've always had that semi-like relationship there with St. Mary's and ice hockey. So we'd like to welcome them into the co-op as well. And just looking at the numbers, I'm projecting 22 Southwood players this coming season. Obviously, that's the number, depending on how many, some of the 8th graders come out that didn't play last year, or if any other kids come out of the woodwork. Based on the number graduating, the seniors, I know there's at least one or two kids that were on the team last year that are underclassmen that will not be on the team this year, and they're entries and they will run to other things. So the best guess, we'll have 22 Southwood kids on the next hockey team. I spoke to the athletic director at Westfield, Westfield Tech. He's expecting six kids from Westfield. Gateway graduated one of the players that had been in the co-op, but they have another one coming behind that one. So they're going to be holding strong with two players there. And St. Mary's is projecting two players as well. And so there's 32 total projected, which is exemplary for last season. And as far as adding the rationale for it, for the co-op for us, 22 players is more than, more than one full team, but not enough for two varsity and JV team. And the situation that we run into here is a seven through 12 school. If we only have that varsity team, seventh, eighth, ninth graders are playing varsity ice hockey collisions for, before they're really physically ready to do so. That's not just the skill wise, but that's size wise, but it just becomes a safety. But also providing, you know, having the co-op in place, we can make sure that kids are playing at the appropriate levels.
So Dave, how many students would you need to field two separate teams at JV and a varsity?
This is not what we would need to be. I would say the minimum to do so comfortably would be probably, you know, 26 or 28.
Okay.
So we're, we're close to that. And that, and ice hockey has always attrition when it's happened.
Right.
So if you have 26 kids, that's a team per team. You're lucky to make it through a full season.
It's only two and a half lines.
Yeah, exactly. The last, last season, our last JV game of the year, we only had, I think we had 26 kids.
Oh, wow.
By the end of the season.
So on a max side, you could run four lines, right? So you could have 20, 22 kids per team if you wanted to.
Twenty, twenty, yeah. Twenty per team is a multi right number. Yeah. 18 skiers and two goalies per team. Generally, when a hockey team, a full hockey team, that's 18 skiers, two goalies, so 40 kids.
Okay, so we've got room to grow.
Yes.
Okay.
So that was my next question. So, you know, it says no cuts have been made and none are anticipated in the future. Like what would have to happen for there to be cuts? Would, we have to exceed 40?
Yeah, yeah. I would say if we get, if we get comfortably over 40.
And, and Dave, just correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be, but we couldn't be offering a co-op if we were cutting some of our own players?
No, we could not be seeking a co-op. Correct, right, correct. So yeah, with the MIA, we have the existing co-op, so all the players that are in the program would be grandfathered.
Yes.
But we could not seek to continue the co-op.
Correct. So if, so the Southwood numbers grew to where there was 40, we would not require a co-op at that point?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. So we've got room to grow. And then if we ever did get to that point, we'd have to re, re look at what groups are part of the co-op?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is, this is just one step in the process. We have to go through, the PBIAC has to vote to approve it. And then from there it goes to the MIAA, which is essentially the District One executive review board. They meet tomorrow morning. And I've already sent a request to them, so I expect to hear back after they, after they vote over tomorrow.
Any other questions on hockey? Since I've got you here, I have two questions for you that I kind of got caught here the last couple of days. I thought since you were here, you might be able to help us out. Where do we stand with varsity basketball coach? I know our current varsity basketball coach for the boys' side decided not to coach this year. Do we have a replacement yet? Or we, where's that search stand?
Doing interviews as we, on as we speak, but I did three interviews today. I did four yesterday. I have one more tomorrow.
Awesome.
I expect to have coaches that will, boys and girls replaced by the end of next week.
Fantastic. And are we, are we following the same type of process we did with baseball that I heard was extremely successful or just we doing it differently?
It's part of the hiring process.
Yeah, like, it sounds like when we did baseball, that we kind of had maybe a community member. We had a couple, couple of people on a selection board?
This time we're not doing that because of the numbers of candidates that we have.
Okay.
With baseball, we had six candidates, so it makes sense. We, we found all of them up to the committee.
Okay.
Down to two for me.
Yeah.
This time we didn't have that number.
Not, didn't need it? Okay. And then other question I got was, do we have a, I know there's a question of a venue or a possible venue for indoor track? Has that been decided yet or no?
It has not. We actually had our PBIIC meeting today and it mentioned that it's not looking very likely. Smith College just hasn't committed yet, and I don't, doesn't look that they're going to.
Related to that, how about wrestling? Do we know anything about wrestling?
I have not heard anything to keep us from believing that wrestling is going to happen this year. Everybody's moving forward with plans to wrestle in the winter, so.
Good. Fingers crossed, right? Do we have any other open vacancies on the coaching side? I don't mean to catch up, like, quick on the spot here.
But in the winter, depending on who's hired for the varsity position, I mean, the current JV coaches.
Okay.
The current JV coaches are, they're running for varsity positions currently.
Okay.
And I believe the boys, or the girls softball coach is, may not be returning for the spring. I think he was another one and Don Bell was out last year, but I haven't confirmed.
Okay.
Other than that.
We're, we're set. Good. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Sanchagrin? Thank you very much. All right. Where did I go? All right. Principal Sassa. Principal Sassa. You have some uh strategic plans and benchmark data for us tonight, you wanna share?
Yes. So you've already been presented the district strategic plan, goals and objectives, so. I'm here tonight to present the Woodland strategic objectives which support the district plan. So versus not reading the district component, and you have the document in front of you, I'll just go back just right to Woodland's piece. So for, for diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. Um this is something we were doing last year, but continuing, um we're looking at doing this for consistency across the district, communicating with families. The first and third Tuesday each month, but there's more communications that are coming out still um at this point in time. But at least those would be a regular commitment. Um honestly, I sent some out before a Tuesday. It depends what information needs to be brought forward. Cause some might be time sensitive and you might need that sooner than wait until Tuesday to share it. Uh teachers communicating content area unit topics with families, so we have through our curriculum. Uh materials, letters, materials to send home to families on how you can support at home and what's being covered in the classroom. So teachers have already been sending those home. Um I know we're getting into a unit two for math, so that one will be coming home shortly. We, what's new for this year would be about creating an attendance team, so. I envision that being myself, probably my secretaries, cause they're involved with the attendants and the school nurses, cause um. In the past, we probably had some attendance issues when we were remote for our little kids, for the participation. Other than that, when we weren't remote, we'd have decent participation minus a few families that I need to, you know, communicate with and try to work with. Um so now we're in school, you know, we don't have these, not gonna go on remote. Um but we still have kids who have illnesses, who have to still get tested, maybe have COVID. So their attendance rates are gonna still go up there, so I have to collaborate and work very closely with. The attendance people involved, the nurse particularly, and the secretaries, and communicate with families. If I know the situation, I'm not gonna reach out to them, but if there's a. Case that I don't know what's happening, if we can better support at school, you know, between school and home, we will. Um and then for, you know, we're gonna continue with our social emotional lessons in the classrooms, that's with our adjustment counselors. Uh so that will be our focus to continue our work on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. I know at the opening of the school year, I read, um all are welcome here, it's a picture book. And so that was a piece I did followed up by our counselors in some of their SEL lessons, and we'll continue to do that throughout the year. Under guaranteed and viable curriculum. Uh we are gonna administer, we have already um been doing some of our these assessments, but the illustrative, illustrative math and our into reading unit assessments. We are working um closely this year with Hill, so we had our into reading program purchased last year. But our year was not to focus on ELA, so we didn't really have training, we just were using the program, getting a feel for it, using parts. But this year, our work is honed in on the, the work with Hill to identify what components of the programs. This is a national program. So it could be supporting more than what we need for our Massachusetts standards, so we have to tease out. And with the science of reading, what's the most important aspects of the program to be using in our instruction in the classroom? So there are unit assessments that go along with both of these programs, so we'll be teasing out which assessments they will be using to have some commonality. We are administering the DIBELS and the I-ready benchmark assessments, so we're doing that beginning, middle and end of the year. We have the beginning of your data, which is what you'll see after this part of the presentation. Um and then we have within the student schedules a WIND block, that stands for what I need. So that's an opportunity where it's separate from instruction. So this is a point where we can target students' needs or areas of growth for them. Um without anybody being penalized for missing anything. Um and this can be where some of our other services are provided for our ELL students, for our special education students. For using our, our reading specialists or our math interventionists can all happen within our WIND block. Without it impacting any missing curriculum. Uh we'll be implementing the into reading curriculum. Definitely with a focus um on our phonics and phonological awareness, cause that's what the science of reading is sharing is the most important for us to really. Hone in on during the early years, and we'll be implementing the illustrative math curriculum, which continues to align with our shift to problem-based learning. For instructional technology, again, administering the beginning, middle and end of the year diagnostic assessments, which I talked about being the DIBELS and the I-ready. We have um at the grade levels and even our specialist teachers, they have a weekly PLC meeting time. And that is being used to really inform our work with students, looking at our diagnostic formative and summative data. Uh and we work with Hill and we do work with our STEM coach. So there's like an alternating piece, so about half the time is with Hill. We do data meetings, we do our um meetings around the program itself to have these conversations with teachers about effective practices. And what parts of the program I'll be using, and then the STEM coach helps us with the math data. To facilitate that conversation and our plans for our students and utilizing different resources that we have. Under engaged learning, again, our PLC meeting time, we're within that time, we're working with Hill, some of that is ongoing professional development. Um and then we will continue with the illustrative math, you know, doing more implementation with that. And our, again, PLC time is really focused on the data, so it's really about our curriculum, it's really about our data and our instructional decisions that we're making. And if we have to make any tweaks to our curriculum scope and sequence, it will stem from those conversations. The uh, this will be a work in progress. I don't see this initially starting right from the beginning, but as we do our work with Hill. And finalizing what are those look for, like we did for math, we will formalize some thought process of what are the look for is in our ELA instruction within the classroom. So which then we can do some conducting cycles of observation. To see how the, the students are being engaged cognitively, you know, um with the, the work ahead of us. And then continue consulting with Alex, Alex Hirschberg, who's from James Levine and Associates. Uh we worked with him last year and we've worked with him the year before that as well. To continue our work on our tiered social emotional supports and our child study team and student assistance team processes. And if you have any questions?
I was wondering, like, they're doing SATs? Education. A, what, the WIND block, when we talk about at our, at our um. At a retreat, is this sort of falling right into this just-in-time teaching, where we're gonna be able to address all their limitations? What block did that replace?
No.
Or is it, or did you reorganize the whole day, where we kind of speak some time and, okay, awesome.
And the PLC meetings, um what is their frequency and duration? Is it like a once a week?
Fifty-five minutes.
Okay. Um and then I know you said that you were like kinda doing intro reading, kind of experimenting, is this your first year of full implementation for the intro reading?
Yeah, yes, with our work with Hill and defining what that is. So we're implementing it, but we're still working on the guidance piece, so.
The early, early, early.
Early, 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 yeah.
And I know that older grades were piloting illustrative math previously. Is this your first year with illustrative math?
First year.
Okay, good luck. It's a lot to take on you.
Well, I think it supports a lot of our practices for teaching math that we did with Mount Holyoke College, but this just offers the curriculum. Versus we created the curriculum.
And I think they're both excellent choices, so, yeah, good luck.
Do you have any other questions on the. Strategic plan? Alright, so now we're going to the colorful data.
Yes.
What, what are we looking at first?
Well, we're gonna go to the next couple of slides, so, that's okay. Um so this is our DIBELS data. And you'll see, this is the beginning of your data for kindergarten. The composite score is made up of those subtests below averaged together, so overall, just looking at composite score. Um it's our benchmarks, what we wanna be focusing on towards getting to the end of the year, so this is just our first start. Looking at the beginning of their data, we do have twenty-nine percent of our students or twenty-three students who are already on or above benchmark level. So you know, for as far as honing in on using this as a roadmap to guide us and what we need to do for our students. We know the kiddos that we might need to look at closer for some of our intervention supports. Will know how, you know, how we can better support our excelling students within our WIND block, like it's like where are their strengths? So they're gonna be in a different place on their acquisition of literacy skills than other students. You know, we hope to reach that goal, you know, of, of eighty-five percent being on benchmark. And knowing that we will have students that will continue to have to focus on for any tier two or tier three supports, but at a tier one, we're hoping. You know, that's our, our goal to reach is eighty-five percent.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year.
Maybe not this year, at the end of three years.
But we're gonna follow the, so we're gonna follow this group for three years, or we're expecting that kindergarten by the.
No, we're gonna, now we're gonna test again in the middle of the year, we're gonna test at the end of the year, but so you're gonna see these bars change, you're gonna see more.
Right. Yep. And you're hoping that green and blue by the end of the year moves from twenty-three to eighty.
Green and blue, we're hoping, we're hoping.
Eighty-five percent.
Right, eighty-five percent.
Yes.
So sixteen, so you're looking at fifty, fifty-four, sixty-four.
Yep, it's always good to set a goal.
No, I mean, that's right.
Doesn't really work, but that's, you know.
But, but Superintendent Wilder said three years, that, so it's.
This is, well, this is what they call the high-quality instructional materials that the state has told us to get. This is our first year. Whenever you start a new, you know, when we started in math, you sometimes see the dip in the first year because it's new material. But these are high-quality instructional materials, their teachers are learning the science of reading.
Yeah.
While implementing the new curriculum. So you, you're not going to see the full effect of the high-quality instructional materials. Until about the second to third year, when they have their, it all mastered.
Right, so then, when we get to the third year, the kindergarten students, where, where they're, where they're at, we should see a higher improvement in that group. But also, is it fair to say that these groups that are in kindergarten now? That will be in second grade in third year should also see an improvement, because now they've been doing this for three years, is that fair?
Foundation skills.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Have great teachers over there.
Super.
So this year is a lot of new, a lot of trying things out, so um it's gonna be a process.
So like, keep in mind though, Robert, it, it's not like a linear progression.
Oh, no, no, right, understood.
I always say it takes me about three years to really like, like get my curriculum, so that like, I'm, I'm presenting it in the best way, right? So this year's kindergartners, three years from now, those years' kindergartners will be, have, have the material presented to them in a, in a cleaner, more efficient way. So you know, e- every year it'll be an improvement for sure.
If we're thirty-four percent of them right now that are at benchmark or above.
That's great.
The goal would be, we're gonna see where they're at at the end of the year. Whatever the delta is, is gonna be the improvement that they made. What we're hoping and, and what we're saying is that at the end of the three years, the change from the beginning to the end of the kindergartners should be bigger than what we get this year.
Well, the benchmarks might look a little different.
No, but the change should be bigger, right? If we're doing a better job teaching.
So what you're saying is the, the end of, the, the delta this year.
Yeah.
Should, and compared to the delta three years from now. The, three years from now, the delta's change will be, uh, yeah, absolutely.
Because they're gonna be more ingrained in what they're doing, they're presenting it better, the kids are gonna be able to absorb it and pro, and hopefully. Their, their results are gonna be better, or at least in theory, in theory, that's what it should work, right?
Excellent readers.
No, no, I understood, but I mean, that's.
Theory, that's.
And just for those of us that, cause if you ask me, I don't know what this is, what does DIBELS stand for?
Well, I got that because I never can remember all of the.
There are people on, online that don't know what that is either.
It is the, hold on. Dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. DIBELS is easier.
I know. Early literacy skills.
And when we see the discontinued bars, what is that like, what does that mean?
So for students, if they're taking their assessment, uh, uh, so like, if you didn't do well on the phonemic awareness assessment. And they were scoring like well below expectation, then they don't go to the next test.
Oh.
So the testing gets stopped.
Got it.
It was discontinued because they're not in a place to access it. It's too challenging, they can't do that, so why.
Extremely frustrated.
Got it, okay.
Alright, so on to grade one. Again, with looking at composite data, we have thirty-six percent of our students um meeting the benchmarks above, or meeting or on, above. And then that would sort of thirty-four students total there, while we have obviously other students to move in that forward direction as well. But nothing changes with, you know, the still plan is the same from grade to grade on what our focus is and how we use the WIND block. To help support.
These poor children learn how to read at home.
Yeah.
Or, that's a good chance.
Well, yeah, so when you look at some of the data, I think one piece was some kids have scored higher on word reading, but that's just sight word recognition. And that's what the problem is, because they don't have the code, so we need to go back and focus on the code. Cause when they get more complicated, challenging words, they need to have the, the sound base.
Right.
To decode.
Sound that out.
You can't memorize every word, so memorization will only get you so far.
Right.
So it might show that they do, do really well with word reading, but it's gonna backfire on them as they get older.
And you'll see that when third, fourth, the fifth grade.
So, so you're saying, but that should show up on the decoding section, right?
So, well, you got nonsense words, that's, it's the word, it could be the word.
So is it the letter sounds, what, so when you're saying.
The nonsense word fluency closed, the nonsense word fluency.
When they give you the nonsense word fluency, they're giving you a nonsense word, and I even wrote down an example in case, cause unless they're administering this, you don't remember what each test does. But dip, if they give you the word dip, the kids can do either, it'll be modeled like, say, diff, say, in the individual sounds of words. So the kid can go dip, if, or the kid could just go diff. On just the letter sound, correct letter sound, the student would score three points if they did dip, if. But they also score three points if they say diff. Now, on the nonsense word, it's the same word, but if the kiddo, oh, if the kiddo only did dip, if, they get, they don't get any word reading, like they didn't read the word. So the, the assessment is used for two parts.
But most of these kids in grade one. Were, uh, cause Ryan just, does that, were, were, a good chunk of these were doing this at home last year?
Well, they were remote learning.
No, they, we weren't using DIBELS last year, so ever, this is totally. I mean, we started the DIBELS assessment mid-year last year.
Okay.
Uh we were using the into reading assessment, but then with the dyslexia and what was coming out, this was, we decided we'd make the shift earlier on. So we were administering it, but we didn't really go much further than administering it, getting that far. This year, we're, we're going a little bit deeper, we're gonna go deeper in what that is.
Lexia was our big one, and I already had a reading component two online.
Yeah.
Do we have a percentage of grade two that?
You do, because um I, we had to finish some assessments, so it's gonna be on the screen on the next slide.
Well, what I, what I meant to say was, we have a, a percentage of grade two that needs to kind of revert back to this, you know, grade one assessment. Did we have any kind of, because of COVID, you know, the remote learning, were there any?
This is all based on the sound code, so the assessment pieces, we don't need to do necessarily letter names, you know, cause. That's for the younger level, like they need to, if you look at the kindergarten one, they'll have letter names, so they'll be just shown random letters, uppercase, lowercase. Kids should know that by second grade, you know, if there's a problem that we're, you know, they would already have identified by, for special education or something. So as you get on, you get some different assessments, but some are the same. And so we're using the same type of an assessment with whether kindergarten first or second to get the range of where the kids are at in their skills.
So second grade and first grade under the decoding section are probably, are they looking at it the same way?
It should be the same thing.
Okay, no, I guess, so this is kind of interesting, cause now your first graders actually are, are scoring better at the beginning of the year on decoding percentage-wise than your second graders. Is that, am I reading that right?
I, I have to pull out the assessments to be definite definitive on the words that they have, because the benchmarks could be different.
Okay.
So like, you see grade two, like.
Yeah.
You see letter sounds closed, decoding, then you're gonna start seeing reading accuracy, reading fluency, reading comprehension, like those aren't like necessarily.
The maze was not in any other grade, the maze starts at grade two.
Yeah, no, I was just kinda looking just at decoding, like if we look at the second graders, where we're at forty-eight percent of them are in the red. But for our first graders in decoding, we only have twenty-eight, or sorry, thirty percent of them.
I would need to review the, the assessments just to see.
Grade one, grade two, it's a benchmark.
Yeah.
I mean, the idea here though is we're not comparing one grade level, and that's right, I mean, these are the same kids that we're gonna. I mean, the idea here though is we're not comparing one grade level, and that's right, I mean, these are the same kids that we're gonna look at mid, you know, beginning, mid, end.
Right.
I mean, if you wanna look at patterns that I think Pat was trying to get at, I think the iReady results are are more in line with where where you were going, Pat.
Yeah.
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 Alright, well, looking at the grade two, are you set to go past that then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright. So it's.
I didn't mean to.
Beginning, middle of the year data, cause then you're gonna compare beginning of the year to the middle of the year, and it's gonna make a lot more sense to you.
So the one thing about iReady data, that this is based on expectations at the grade level, the standards that they are supposed, students are supposed to master approach. For the whole year, so we're looking at students acquisition of here kindergarten standards, where we're at the beginning of the year. And then we're gonna be looking at in the middle of the year, and you're gonna see the shift, so right now nineteen percent of our students or sixteen of students. Are already showing through this diagnostic assessment that they are at on above grade, mid or above grade level. While we have the rest of the students, eighty percent of them, to be working towards. Progress on the grade level standards.
Which is good, right?
It is.
We want them to be all green at the end of the year.
Yes, but this is the study here, we're just.
If they're all green at the beginning of the year, we got it, we got it.
Our work is done, right, like we have to sell them, you know?
That I'm talking to the parents who are with them.
Our work is done.
So and for grade one, we have thirteen percent of our students are twelve that are mid or above grade level. And we'll have a chunk here seventy-four percent who are one grade level below, which is, you know, by the end of the year, like this whole big chunk, it's moved to the green. And then we have thirteen percent of our students, which were two grade levels below, so they might be operating more, say, at the preschool level right now on their assessment. So there are gonna be kids, no matter even by the end of the year, are not quite meeting benchmarks, we want, but we can be looking at these individual kids and seeing their growth individually, cause everybody's in a different place.
Yeah.
And then with the grade two data. Um, we have seven students that are mid or above grade level, that's eight percent, and then you'll see, you know, just kind of similar, the middle chunk. We've got sixty-three percent that are working towards their standards, and we're gonna have um. Twenty-six students that are gonna be still a couple more years behind, so those might be more, some of our kids are targeted for some of our intervention supports during the wind blocks.
So is it, I guess, look, again, I know we don't, but looking from. Grade one and we're right at grade two, again, that that second grade group. There's a bigger chunk of them that are two grade levels below.
Keep in mind though, that minus COVID though, keep in mind that that's normal.
Yes.
The higher you go in school, the further the separation in abilities. So, very normal, even uh in removing COVID from the equation.
So basically, if Pam's not hyperventilating over these numbers, then we're.
You're gonna see the shift as we.
You're like the canary in the coal mine.
Glad to be in the can.
And again, this is about our grade level standards, so we're working on those this year, and you'll start seeing the shift, and we saw it last year with our mid and end of the year as well.
So when you bring these in in the middle, we're gonna, we're gonna craft them, getting to the middle.
It'll be different.
Yes. The the program does a nice little report, so I can just do a SIPS tool, I didn't know, I didn't have to do that work.
You shouldn't have said that.
I slayed over there.
You should have said. We did a good job.
We paid for these programs to do that work for us.
See, that's a good question.
If if your, if your kid, they is one of those that is, what's was it, two grade levels or below, are they being told that like their child needs extra, are are we gonna do it?
Pre-group.
Yeah, they are.
Those are gonna be kids, we don't have to say, gonna necessarily tell the parents that they're like that for below, but we've identified needing some more intensive support, so those will be. Our tier two or two or three kids, whether they're on an, need to be evaluated for an IP. Whether they get the pullouts for um our SIPs program for ELA, or whether our math interventionist works with them in the classroom with groups.
The parents get told, like if you pull them out for different?
Well, we're a title one school, so we don't need to re, you know, we don't need parent permission, cause we serve as all students.
Just like, oh, help them, it's like, oh, if you're, my kid's being pulled out for ELA, like, oh, I wanna know so I can help him out too.
And we have our conferences, which would also be a time, hopefully, parents, I mean, teachers are having that communication with with parents, you know, that their children will be receiving these supports.
But that, you know, Ryan does bring up a good point in that, I don't know, all parents are like that, like. But there are parents that do wanna know, and with the frequency with which we're administering the test. And like, you know, I mean, I know, like, I've always been like, hmm, I wonder how my kids did on that, you know?
Yes.
So like, they come home talking about it, you know, and like, I'm always curious. Um, and like, there isn't a protocol in place, because legally you're not required to, sometime, some parents wanna know, some parents don't.
Yeah.
I mean, it, the last thing I'm gonna do is advocate for dumping more work onto, you know, teachers or administrators, but it is, it is a good point that Ryan brings up.
I do think a lot of the teachers, um, you know, do bring forward to the parents the data that they do have on their kiddos and where they fall. I mean, they have, I mean, we used to use the STAR assessment. Parents knew, parents would know, leave their conference, what reading level.
Yes. Well, that's the thing that's nice about this program, that the the teachers like about this program is prior to conferences, they can print out stuff like that, and they can have them ready for you.
Yeah, we can drill, it goes to the individual level.
Yeah, yeah.
And if they don't, if they don't show up, we can email it to them?
Yeah, we make a copy, but I don't know if taking it from the computer itself, if you email it, I haven't tried that yet.
I'm assuming you, I mean, if it makes these really nice presentations, I think they could export to a PDF or something like that.
It's a new, new thing, we're all try.
Yeah, we're all trying.
So we'll be Sullivan just to notify, but we don't need to risk.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks, Jenny.
Is Jenny, is Jenny online?
I was watching for a while.
Oh, very good, is it hybrid in action?
So do you have any other questions for me?
No. I think Mrs. Mahoney should put DIBL's definition on the superintendent's quiz for her little fundraiser.
Yeah, I'm getting at them right.
Yeah.
DIBLs, DIBLs. Don't test me.
What's it stand for, Rob?
I don't know. Mrs. Sasso has.
Dynamic is the first word I got. I wanna see something.
My indicator is a basic early learning skill.
Early learning.
Basic early learning skills.
Seriously.
And then, you know, we mentioned this. Something I mentioned to you, the SIPs, that's what our reading interventionists are using as a program with the students, it's systematic instruction and phonological awareness, phonics and sight words. So SIPs.
I got it. Thank you very much for your time, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just to let you know, I wanted to commend you on all of that, back to communication. The communication that you send out to the kids and the parents that we get copies of, I think it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Absolutely fantastic, very clear, very good size, very informative.
She would do that every Sunday last year.
Like every Sunday.
Yeah.
I know, Scott.
I'm trying to.
I know, and that, I know the computer's not doing forty.
No, that I have to do.
No, no, sorry, thank you very much, that effort is, is.
I think all of the building administrators are doing an excellent job of that this this year.
And we'll tell them that when they come, I'm assuming.
Well, I appreciate the positive feedback.
Fantastic.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your time, alright.
I'm gonna go home.
Find out from Jenny, if that's okay, if she can go home. Okay, Superintendent Willard.
Goals, okay, so this year, my goals are a little bit different than they were last year, last year, they were really COVID focused, because we were in the midst of the pandemic. And so, at the end of the school year, um I do a self-assessment, and it's not a like a a formal self-assessment, but it. We reflect back on the goals of that we had the previous year, we look at some of the feedback that we've received over the school year. And uh that is the work that the building administrators and myself do, I think the first thing we did was re, was called refocus this year, or reflect, it was reflect and refocus. So one of the things that we looked at, um as we were going through, um on the first thing was data, cause you always look at your student growth. Um, we knew this year that the MCAS data that we were getting was only for diagnostic purposes, and we don't get it till September. And as much as we tried last year, um we had so many data sources from the new reading program, from iReady. And we were, we weren't getting data. That we could use from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year and the end of the year and show growth. And so I was really talked with Jenny about it, and I said, there are, one of our goals for this year is we must have. A benchmark assessment plan for this year, like that, that was like the non-negotiable that I had, I said, we need to know where our kids are at the beginning of the year. I want it to be consistent, I want it to be vertically aligned, and so we need to tweak out what works, what gives us information to drive instruction. And then the acceleration roadmap came out, and it basically said, you need to have this anyway, so. That was great, because that was kind of where we were anyway, and the acceleration roadmap came out, and so we use a lot of their language to help us as guidance. Um, we also knew in the past, um we were in the middle of a three-year math initiative that our reading scores. Um, despite all the efforts of our teachers, there there was just some disconnect between. The work that our teachers were doing and the outcomes from our students. And so, by the pre-COVID, I think it was in the November before COVID, we went to an MTSS conference, um it was a group of. A student, teachers, um administrators, central office staff, and MTSS stands for multi-tiered systems of support. And what it means is that your tier one curriculum, that is the curriculum that all the students in your class receive. You should be reaching eighty-five percent of the students in your classroom. And when we looked at our reading scores, we knew we were not there. So it was a really hard time for us, cause we were in the middle of a math initiative. Um, they had just finished a literacy initiative that they had started before I became a superintendent, and. Eh, it was a difficult conversation to have, but that we needed to move towards high quality instructional materials, we need to be reaching eighty-five percent of our kids. And so, we had started piloting it after that November, and luckily, um as Kim said, we were able at the end of the COVID year to have, we had some additional funds. We were able to buy the materials, but we were still in the midst of our math initiative, so we put the materials in the hands of our teachers and said, use them next year if you want. But this is the year that we're really going to be starting our literacy initiative with them. So, that was good. But we really didn't have lots of really good data, I mean, really good assessment data. Um, some of the other issues that we reflected upon, um that we were having some issues with equity and belonging in our district. Um, at the end of one of the MCAS, uh, it was a student survey done, and there was some. Inequality about how some of our students were feeling a sense of belonging in our school. And so that, as as an admin team, we put that down as one of the weaknesses, and something that we really needed to address in our plan for focus indicator three. Um, we had feedback last year that our communication wasn't where it should have been. So, we decided to put out a survey at the end of the school year last year to get the results, to reflect on and to look at. Uh, with our admin team and to put a plan in place to make sure that our communication was transparent and timely. And it actually turned out that it was a strength for us, the majority of our uh constituents felt that it was really good. So, we made a couple, little more adjustments, as you heard um Kim say today, she, we're being very thoughtful with specific dates that we're sending out parent communication, so parents can expect it. Um, focus indicator two A, the procedures, the routines, the operational systems. Um, we looked at that, um it was really last year, that was another strength, I would definitely say for us, where we really put an emphasis on safety last year. And um with the COVID nineteen, keeping the scenarios and quarantining, so to us, that was a strength. Um, although one weakness was um. The uh, as I just said, our assessments, our assessments were all over the place, they didn't give us useful data. Um, so we really used a lot and assessed the data, and you'll see that that was part of what we put, that was aligned with the acceleration roadmap. And something that we are really working on this year, um for, as a school district, to present to you very clear beginning of the year data, middle of the year data, and end of the year data. And also, very importantly, entrance and exit criteria for MTSS. So, in addition to that, we um, I go through the rubric every year myself, and I just look at where, I I kind of rank myself on where I think I'm going to be. And one of the ones that I really saw was a weakness for us, was the assessment piece that we needed to focus on this year. And also on the cultural proficiency, on making sure that we have a sense of belonging and that all. All families have a sense of belonging in our district. So, goal one is always the student learning goal, and clearly, it's deals with our pre-year initiative around the science of reading. And new high quality instructional materials. I go through the key actions of what we're doing, I go through benchmarks, um I aligned it with our focus indicators, uh that is on the rubric. And I included uh samples of uh evidence, so we can take it goal by goal, if you would like. Um, I do have five goals this year, but what I did do, um I attended the new, the superintendent evaluation, and one of the things that they suggested. Um, was to put the evidence in here, that would be expected at the end of the year for you as a school committee to measure the growth of it. Um, it's a very transparent process, uh we go through it. And um we look at what the benchmarks are going to be and the indicators, because the rubric has lots of indicators. Oh, and there was one more thing in my self-evaluation. So, when I was looking at my results last year, I had some needs improvement on certain categories. And so, I called in um the school committee member who gave me the needs improvement. And I just said, you know, what do you think that I could do to um improve the needs improvements? And the feedback I received was, it was nothing to do with you, it was that the rubric was not aligned to the work that we were doing. And that the school committee member felt that my overall performance was exemplary. Am I correct? Thank you.
You got, you got one ton.
So I, I, so, we really are reflective, um because it is a growth tool. And so I really wanted to know, like, okay, so you thought it was a needs improvement, like, tell me what, you know, you think I could do better? And in the feedback was, it wasn't you, it was just that the rubric, so part of what they're doing now is. They're focusing the indicators, it's a much more focused evaluation. So, if you look at it, it goes through the goal, it goes through the key actions, the benchmarks, and then it goes through the focus indicator. On this entire rubric that I am going to be focusing on, so you don't have to get overwhelmed with all of the indicators. And then they said, put in suggested evidence that you can use um to show whether the goal was met or not. So, that is the first goal about the just pre-year district initiative, anybody have any questions on that?
So the people that are new to this, the, you know, at the end of the year, we evaluate, um you know, the superintendent, and the, this, having this focus indicator. Um, is a new piece for us, it's really helpful, because it'll help us zone in on which parts of the standard we should be looking at, and you know, Jen's saying, well, this is what I think my evidence is going to be. So, you know, eh, at the end of the year, we go back, we take a look at this document, we take a look at the evidence that she provides for us, does it align, does it align with this focus indicator? Um, it's actually helpful to have this piece.
Yes, it's all brand new.
Yeah, yeah, I like it a lot.
Fascinating, um, and and I had gone to it in like November of two thousand nineteen, and then COVID hit. And I just got to Chairman Hool, that this was not the year to be going through a brand new evaluation cycle with, there was too much out of place. So, it is much lin, more linear, um and it's much easier to understand. The next goal is throughout the year, um I will support the administrators in creating meaningful, actionable, and measured professional practice goals around using data in real time. And how to use that data to support student learning. So I've already started this year, I've already met with all of our building principals, we've already looked at all of our beginning of the year benchmark data. Um, we talked about setting uh learning growth goals, um and it goes through all the actions that I'm going to do uh throughout the course of the year. Uh, it does have the benchmarks there, it has my focus indicators, this is a pretty strong one, um that's why there's more focus indicators, cause this is a big part of my job. Is um working with building principals, you have to think of it as, I'm here. Then I have to work with them to make sure that they're doing their goals, cause then they meet with the teachers, and then the teachers meet with the kids. So a big part of my job is really meeting with the building administrators, doing walkthroughs with them, um. Talking to them about their data meetings, I actually go to some of the data meetings with the teachers. Um, and it's actually really good information. Um, so this one does have three focused indicators, because instructional leadership is probably the biggest part of my job. Um, I take it as the biggest part of my job.
That's why we hired him.
So that, that's a big one. Any questions on that? Okay. Goal three, throughout the year, communicate school updates that impact Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District with stakeholders in all three communities and provide the school committee with any information necessary to make timely decisions. Now, Rob didn't know when he took over as chair of the school committee. He's going to be getting emails on a daily basis about lots of little things that he really doesn't really need to know about. But I do have to keep him.
I get them.
There's an ambulance at the school. This is why, just in case somebody calls him and says something like, I always have to keep the chair of the school committee. I get an email. I just send it to him. This is an FYI. Like, you'll get the tiered focus monitoring one tomorrow. So you, I don't know how we send things out to all of you, but if Rob, like Rob Turbin Stevenson said, you know, could I send this out to everybody? Absolutely. Share away. But it's my job to make sure that I communicate with you what's going on in the schools. Again, using Blackboard on a limited but necessary basis. And then communication, demonstrate strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills and the evidence are sample of memos, procedures for communication with the school committee. So as I said, I get the information, I give it to Rob. If I feel it's something that everybody can get, then I give it to Amy and Amy would send it out. My biggest responsibility is to communicate with the chair of the school committee. Any questions on that one? Okay. Throughout this year, as the COVID-19 pandemic continues, I will ensure a school environment that focuses on safety and a continuous plan for student learning. You're already going to see that some of the things in here are things we've already accomplished. Working with you on a masking policy, implementing the tests and stay. We're going to have our first safety meeting this Friday. My lovely four o'clock morning with a DPWs. And working, working with our local providers, support staff for the social emotional needs of students. And it has focus indicators and evidence. And then goal five, this is the big one this year because this is really our new initiative. Over the course of the year, I will support the district in its mission to create a safe school environment where all students, staff and families have a sense of belonging and by the end of the year, develop a plan for growth. Again, acceleration roadmap aligned, district improvement aligned. These are the steps that we're going to be doing this year. We did just do the belonging survey. To be honest with you, it didn't give me a lot of great information. I'll share it out at the next school committee meeting, but it wasn't as informative as I had hoped. But it's really about working on using, engaging the families. And actually tomorrow at our leadership meeting, we're going to be looking at some of the results of it because one of the issues that parents raised were, I don't, not always sure I know where my kids are at grade level and that sort of thing. So it's definitely an area of improvement that we can work on. So that's one of the things we're going to be talking about tomorrow. And we also want to make sure that all of our practices and policies make every duck, everybody in our community feel safe and that they can walk into our school. So we, we do have a long-range plan for cultural growth at the end of the year. We've ruled out our Rams initiative and I heard you talking about the orange and the bullying. We have our October Ram hashtag Rams belong coming up soon.
Everybody wants, I put one of those stickers on my notebook and everybody was asking me where.
The orange one?
No, the Rams belong one.
I have a one.
Everybody wants them.
Yes, this is the one coming up this month, when we get these.
I was going to ask it.
As soon as I get a promise that they're not going to be stuck on these devices.
Oh, okay.
I was going to say, I put them on like my kids' school.
That's the thing. I'd be tempted to stick it right on there.
Yeah, but, but then you've got a leased device. There has to be. Financing company in free.
If a kid should shrink that from the razor blade.
Oh, I let you for that.
Well, I wasn't always going to be doing that job.
Right.
Not it.
Well, my. So that's going to destroy anything because it's in a contract that all the students had to sign.
I'm sorry, say, say.
All, when all the students got their school devices, they had to sign a contract that the parents had to sign as well, saying you had to return it nice and clean with nothing on it.
Right.
Oh, well, they can't put.
They might need to be reminded of that.
Problem solved, Mr. Presley.
Mr. Presley.
I wish.
She was fantastic, by the way.
Great.
And that's going to be out there, making sure.
Yeah.
So the next thing that we did was, we did work on a survey to go out to our students to take powder mills through the regional school and want some for our staff to take as well. So we're going to get benchmark data at the beginning of the year. And we are going to look at opportunities for growth. And those are the goals for this year. Any questions? Any different evidence that you would like included?
There's lots of evidence.
Yeah.
The only question I have for you is, when we talked earlier to go. So are we, the impression I got is that you thought we were going to do a two-year assessment. It, when I read these goals, to me, it sounds like it's probably better to do a one-year assessment since a lot of them are, this year I want to be able to achieve this. Is that?
Goal one is going to be a three.
Well, yeah, no, absolutely. But if you look at the other ones, they're all throughout the year. Do we, do we need to adjust these to over the next two years or? I guess, I guess I'm just kind of looking.
It's kind of out of the.
Because I might have been on the same conference you were about the superintendent evaluation and it was, that said that we could do one year, we could do a two-year, it's.
Are we talking about a, a, a one-year, two-year, what?
Assess evaluation. So now, now that the superintendent has multiple years in the position.
Right.
The state actually recommends that a superintendent with experience have a two-year assessment. Whereas the mid-year evaluation where we would do, I don't know, January or, it would be done at the end of the first year. And then the actual assessment would be completed at the end of the second year. The only challenge that I see with that plan is that superintendent would need four new goals next year because these ones, a lot of them are, are set up for, for this year. And I'm just wondering whether maybe, since you've already done all this work, do we want to just do a one-year and then?
Well, I think it's only goal four that is the, is the COVID-specific one.
Yeah, because the.
The other ones are ongoing for sure.
No, I know, but I guess she, she started them with throughout the year. I mean, we could check, we can adjust those. I guess I'm just looking for some.
Over the course of the next years, right, like so, this, so this could still be my goal, but my key actions and some of my benchmarks might get updated next year based on what I accomplished this year.
Right. I'm open to either or. I just wanted to find, what do you, what, what would you? No, no, I mean.
I, I work for you.
I am seeking, I am seeking your, no, I understand that, but I'm seeking your opinion. As to whether, do you want to adjust these? And then like slightly, we can tweak them and then we can do it on a two-year plan?
That would be, it'd make it your lives a lot easier as well. And because like they said, and you were on there as well, change, it takes multiple years to take effect, so it, it, they usually are two, three goals. And a lot of them, you're going to see, they would be the same goals almost next year.
So I agree with you, Rob, that it would be easier that way. However, keep in mind the amount of turnover that we've had on the school committee. And it's harder for, if you have new people coming on, it's harder for them to enter an evaluation process midway through. Like, all of us have benefited from her explaining these to us right here, right now. I would hope that we're all the same people two years from now, but given our track record, I'm not so sure.
No, that's, we, we as the committee need to determine whether we're going to do a one-year or two-year. I just thought it was, it was sort of, sort of a.
John, I, I agree with, I agree with Pam. I, I, and just from a standard of, you know, most places in the world, you get, you know, that feedback once a year. And it's, it just seems like the nat, more natural thing to do than a two-year.
Yep. John, thank you for speaking up. We, we're all kind of like, where's that voice coming from? No, I, I think based on what she's presented, I think it's set up very concisely for a one-year assessment. But the only reason I brought it up is that superintendent, I spoke about this about a month ago and she indicated she was looking for a two-years. And I'm like, okay, well.
I didn't hear anything. And, and the neat thing with these goals is the goal may stay the same, but my key actions and benchmarks for the following year will probably change.
Right.
Because I can assure you, number one will be the same.
Yep.
And number two will still be the same.
Next year.
Yeah, it's been neat to see her goals evolve over the years too. I mean, this is by far the most reflective superintendent we have ever had. And so just seeing that reflected in her goals is really cool.
Yeah, thank you.
So do we need to have a vote that we're going to have a one-year assessment or is it? Do we just?
No.
Anybody in, in disagreement with the one-year assessment?
One-year is easier for me.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll, so we'll follow the one-year process. Anybody have any questions on this before we move on?
I do not.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Willer.
You are welcome.
Okay. Policies. So. This is the first one that had to come up. So we have a first reading of policy BEDH, which is the public participation at school committee meetings. This was one that we actually had a request or a comment from one of our teachers that sort of asked us to take a look at this, which we certainly did. The adjustments and Pam, help me if I miss one of these here, but I think there's only two spots where we've actually adjusted this policy and it was really to include more, I'll use the proper term stakeholders to be able to participate in public comment. The prior po, or the current policy just indicates the school committee encourages citizens of the district to attend its meetings. We've added and members of the school community. The reason that we did that, we felt it was justified to allow teachers that may live outside our three districts, any parents that have students here on school choice or Metco, anybody that's going to be working in the school, that if we're going to be determining something as a school committee that's affecting their livelihood or their, their ability to work, that they should have an opportunity to come before us and speak. So we made a change there in the second paragraph and the fourth paragraph. Other than that, everything remains the same.
Did this go through any legal stuff?
Yeah.
Sorry, John?
Did this go through any legal stuff? And the second part of that is, did we, so members of the school community, is that defined somewhere else?
It is not. I mean, we basically, anybody that's a member, that would, that would basically encompass employees, parents that have students in the school. I don't think a parent that has a student that's not in the school district or doesn't live in the district would fall under school community. So I'm, I don't know if we definitely need to parse that out, John.
Yeah, I don't think it's a real big deal. I just, it's curious.
Yeah, we did send it to Russell and he gave it a green light or it wouldn't show up tonight, I'm assuming.
Okay.
And Amy's nodding her head saying yes. Anybody have any other questions on this? We'll see this again another two times from, before we vote on it. All right. If that's done, we will move to action items.
Okay, move to approve hosting an ice hockey athletic program co-op between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District, Southwick Regional School, Gateway Regional School District, Westfield Technical Academy and St. Mary's High School of Westfield, Mass, beginning with the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two athletic season recommended.
So moved, second.
Any questions on the approval for hockey co-op? No questions? We'll take a roll call vote to, to approve this. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Rob's a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
I move to accept the settlement agreement by and between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee and the Southwick Town and Granville Regional Education Association paraprofessional unit effective August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, recommended.
So moved, second.
Any questions on the paraprofessional agreement? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to accept. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District and the Southwick Town and Granville Education Association Incorporated, which outlines the terms, conditions and understandings related to lunch period coverage by teachers due to staff shortages at the Southwick Regional School, recommended.
So moved, second.
Any questions on the MOA? Questions with the roll call vote to accept. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Erica?
Yes.
Rob is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the position of liaison to the Southwick Master Plan Committee, recommended.
So moved, second.
All right, so we didn't put this, this was strategically maybe missing from a conversation somewhere.
We didn't.
Uh, so Mr. Jobb, at our last meeting, you voiced some interest in this position. And I'm, I'm wondering if you've thought that over and are willing to accept our proposal to have you represent this body at that board.
So after our last school committee meeting, I decided to attend the meeting at the town hall, planning board meeting and I kind of flipped a coin. And it was heads, yeah, so it landed on head, so I think I'd like to.
Good.
Give it a shot.
Okay, that's, that's a fantastic answer. So we're going to adjust this a little bit. We're going to nominate, the vote for yes would be to nominate Pat to represent this board at the Southwick Master Plan Committee. Do we need a motion to do this or no?
Yes.
Yep.
Second.
All right, so we're, any discussion at this? Pat, last chance to.
Last chance to back out.
Opt out?
I don't really want to sell myself, so.
All right, well, let's just move to a vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Can I vote for myself?
You can vote for yourself.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Rob's a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero. Pat Jobb is our representative on the Southwick Master Plan Committee. And we have a.
Yes, I feel like there's a clap.
We have an action item that Mrs. Mahoney is, was waiting for. She left.
So we talked long enough, everyone.
Oh, wait, and I think Amy may have typed it up.
To approve the Southwick Regional School International Field Trip to Peru for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year recommended.
So moved, second.
Anybody have any conversation about that? I think we're, no, let's move to a vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Rob's a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero. All right. So superintendent, it's back to you.
So I have our current vaccination rates. They have not changed. We're still at forty-eight percent, three hundred twenty-seven students. But the good news is, Southwick's COVID cases between nine twelve and nine twenty-five are down to twenty. Granville's at seven and Tolland is still at one. So we're not seeing a drastic decline in COVID cases. But we're also not seeing a drastic increase in vaccination.
But it's going down.
The cases.
Yeah, the three weeks, the three weeks prior, we're going up. Now we've got two weeks in a row going down. So that's, we're trending in the right direction. But.
With vaccination going down.
As Pam said, the big E. Dun, 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 dun. So we'll see how that goes. But you saw a lot more absences in your classes.
This week.
Have we heard anything anecdotally?
Have that here. So last week, we had a lot. So last week, we had eight students that we had a report out on. So far this week, we have three staff and students who tested positive. So we were eight last week and we're at three so far this.
Do we have any, I know you, you keep indicating we have got it. Have we got teacher vaccination rates yet?
Not yet.
Is it that we're unable to get it or we're not able to get it or?
We could, our attorney said to wait.
Oh, okay.
And I don't, I.
So how are we supposed to meet the eighty percent? I mean, I don't think we're going to get there right now if, if, if the students aren't sort of complying, but.
Ask him again if we can.
But we can't even.
Yeah, that was my question. Are we allowed to ask?
So in my district, we're not. In my district, my administrator said, you're not allowed to ask. It's a HIPAA violation.
Right.
Now, here's the thing though. There are lots of other places and organizations that are requiring it. So I feel like there's, I feel like you, people are just picking sides based on whatever side they want to be on.
They say you can ask about other vaccines. Like, I can go and ask my patients all sorts of.
HIPAA is usually giving away private information that discloses a disease or technique.
For a reason you would discriminate against somebody.
Yeah, this is.
But that's a kind of.
If we're going, if the only way that we're going to have an opportunity for the high school seventh. If we're going, if the only way that we're going to have an opportunity for the high school seventh and above. To have an option for the vaccinated to not wear a mask, we have to meet an eighty percent threshold that includes. Employees, teachers, students. So at some point, we need to, we need teachers vaccination rates.
But before that, before that, what needs to happen is simply. Education and exposure. Like, for example, nobody in my district even talks about it. Like, nobody's even said, you guys are wearing a mask until we reach eighty percent. Okay, like, um, but even just like a visual and like when I said that to my students, they were like, well, where are we at? Like, I don't know, nobody knows.
Forty-eight percent.
But like, even if we just had a visual posted, like, oh, you know, of where we're at, of where the forty-eight percent and that we have to get to eighty.
Yeah.
You know, with some kind of a visual, like, you know, advocating for vaccination.
But here's the interesting thing too, like, so we, so say we have somebody who gets COVID. And we say, oh, they're your close contact. So, we can ask that person, are you vaccinated? Because if you're vaccinated, you don't need to pour it to you. So we do ask people if they're vaccinated.
Right, right.
But we've never done, I'm gonna, I'm gonna email Russ again.
We need to get the number. And what I what I was envisioning was, you know how you go and you have big fundraisers? And they have the thermometer and.
That's what I was envisioning too.
I wanna have. You're able to get rid of the mask, but we get the.
That's what I was envisioning.
For the numbers from the superintendent two weeks ago, like, what is eighty percent? Well, if that number is a hundred or two hundred X, here's where we're at. We need to get to here in order for everybody that's vaccinated to have an option with their masks. Put it on the door when they come in the building or right in the hallway and say, here's where we are. And we can, and that's doing announcements every day.
I get so much backlash, all the students.
But if we.
Really?
But if we can powder it in that.
All, everyone's so divided. I, all the kids. Everyone brings in politics the same age. It's like, oh, I believe this, oh, I believe this. You can't say that. And it turned into this big arguing thing. I said, I reported once, I was like, okay, if we could get our vaccination rates up to this by October. It's possible that the mask can come off. That's all I said. And then it turned into a huge fight. And then I had to have the class president, like, remove people from the group chat. And I was like, I'm, like, I apologize. I was like, I'm sorry. For that, but I mean.
And that's why my district just mums the word. Like, nothing happened.
I wonder if that's why, because like, I have early intervention in my house and she has told me herself, like. I know her personally, so she has told me she's vaccinated, but she, I'm not supposed to ask if this person coming to my house provides services to my child is vaccinated or not.
Right, like how?
Her, her response should be ninety percent of that agency is.
Yeah.
I was like, interesting.
So I was on the same line with you. I I think it would be a nice visual cue for them to go, okay, look, we're only ten away. Maybe. I'll, I'll go.
But I totally understand.
Oh, yeah.
I tried, I really have tried. I really want to take mask off. We all do. And everyone's trying to do their part, but you can't convince anyone to do something of their own choice.
So we did have a call with the commissioner. And, um, he said that he's extending the mask mandate until November first. And then, uh, middle of the month, he's gonna come off with his off ramp for the eighty percent. I do think they're gonna be coming out with some.
Middle of the month?
October fifteenth.
October fifteen, if you've got it.
Oh.
We're not gonna have it.
Yeah.
And then, I'm gonna sneeze, I'm sorry. And then, um. He said that we think there's gonna be some other off ramps, but they're, I I couldn't even tell you what they're going to be. So they haven't even shared for that shit.
Well, I have a feeling if they're, they're gonna look at, they're gonna have to look at COVID rates in the areas where you're in. Like, if our numbers go down, where we've got five. Why are we mad? Nobody in town has got COVID. So why are we masked?
Well, staff not included in the forty-seven percent, because you don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
No, that's.
Twenty-seven students.
It's not even a yes of that.
Yeah. That's forty-seven percent of the students. So the teachers, if they're at ninety percent, that may take us to like sixty-eight.
Yeah.
So we might, that's what I mean. If we know that number, we know what we're shooting for. Then it's like. You don't need everybody to.
It's a little more encouraging when that number goes up.
Yes, that's what I mean. Like, if you're ready to go color that thing a little bit higher up the dial and here's where we need to get to. But you can think about that.
Yeah.
But I still had a child who was vaccinated, who was a close contact, who was exhibiting symptoms.
Oh, yeah.
Always stayed.
So.
You can still get COVID with the vaccine.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm tired of all you folks down here going in.
Oh, wait a minute. Tolland is one, and if you look at the actual infection rate over the last three weeks, Tolland is like a, a hotbed of COVID.
Because of that percentage.
I know. No, I don't, hey!
And that, that, that one added, you know.
And that one was picked out of town.
That person got my raise up to, to total of eight.
For villages.
For, for all these years.
I know Ted, but it's, it's trending up. You have to, you have to.
Got more people down here.
All right. Mr. Presnel. Do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple, just a couple matters I wanna bring to the, to the committee's attention. Um, yesterday, we submitted our, uh, S R three. Or some people call it E S R three, uh, federal grant application. This is a federal grant that. Is, is pretty significant by ways of federal grants that this district sees, um, two point one million dollars. Um, Jenny Sullivan did most of the legwork on this grant. It includes staffing to address some of the learning loss due to COVID, um, some ongoing P P E cost curriculum. Materials and resources. Um, also some capital improvement projects that total about eight hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Um, the application went into Department of Elementary and Secondary Education yesterday. They review it. Come back to us with any comments. We have to approve all the capital projects. We're hoping, um, that that goes smoothly and we'll keep you up to date on that.
Timeline on that, do you think? Because you said it got today, right?
This is a, uh, I should have mentioned also, this is a three-year grant.
Right.
Uh, that runs out to June of, uh, twenty twenty-four. So some of the positions that we're funding through this. Are, uh, some are as short as one year, but others are as long as a three-year, three-year commitment to staffing certain things, so.
Right.
Um.
Now, can you not staff those positions until you get approval from Desi?
It's, um, the expectation is that they're approving all of that stuff. I think the things that are at, uh. Question would be capital projects.
Right.
Um.
Right, that makes more sense.
Their eyeballs on that and make sure that it's consistent with the, uh, federal uniform guidance and.
And what do you expect?
They have separate application for.
Okay, okay. All right, so each one could have a separate turnaround time.
Yes.
Got it.
So that brings me to an article that was in today's paper about schools not using the, the funds that were given for COVID. Have we? Utilized our. We've used, um, to my knowledge, Pat, I, uh, everything. Uh, even soliciting funds from the town of Southway, town of Granville, and town of Tolland. All, uh, chipped in some of their municipal, um, COVID relief money.
Okay.
Um, regional school districts were able to, to do that and, uh, all three towns, uh, supported, supported that. So some of the P P E and supplies that we needed last year. Uh, were, uh, the result of the, the towns stepping up and, and funding that. Um, there were, I, I, to be honest, there were so many grants that were being thrown at us last year that. I don't wanna say unequivocally that every nickel was used, but, uh, certainly the larger ones that we had available to us. And, um. Anything of substance, we used every, every nickel of that. Maybe that's something we can report to, uh, to the committee, you know, through some finance.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Um, in the future, just a recap of where we are with all these, these grant funds.
Okay.
Uh.
Such a really good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, it's, uh. It was kind of a blur as it was happening and the, and the volume of guidance, uh. That was coming out and regulations and reported, did vary. Variations on reporting requirements for each of them was, uh, is quite interesting. Um, so anyways, uh, thanks Jenny, uh, E S R three application is filed. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is we did get, uh, yesterday, the renewal rates for our. Uh, Medex plan, uh, which is a medic, medics, Medicare supplement plan for, uh, people who are retired from the district.
Okay.
And our insurance. Um, the, unlike our active employee plans. The Medex plan renews on a calendar year basis. The other plans, uh, work on a fiscal year, they follow our fiscal year. Um, so the rates. The medical side of that plan, uh, no increase. They're holding the rate, uh, for us. The prescription side of the plan is going up by two point seven percent. Net wise, it's a one point three. Two percent increase. So what we'll do at, uh, either the next meeting or the meeting following that, we'll bring that to you as an action item for your, your, your approval. And, uh, those are two things that I wanted to make the committee aware of.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, we are at our second public comment section, I think, through Tricia.
We scare them all.
Want to, uh.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Cutting it close. Cutting it close.
Anybody, Pat, maybe you can look for an update while we're finishing everything. Um, do we have anybody that wants to do public comment? Without that, we have old business, anything for old business. Oh. Yeah, I did. Oh, so, sorry. Ken wanted to go through the meeting quick. Don't say anything. Are you a Yankee fan?
No.
Okay.
We have a big Yankee Red Sox competition in my house right now, because somebody.
So subcommittee, thank you, Amy, for. No, that's okay. So, uh, negotiations, nothing till October the tenth, thirteenth, I remember. Finance, we have another meeting in next week, next Thursday at nine o'clock. Uh, Pam, L B P, L P V E C.
So the only thing that I had, I didn't mention last week that I should have mentioned is what, one of the things that came up in the last meeting was that there are seven member districts that send. Um, and only two of the seven send ninth graders. Um, and that's been a recurring problem that with regard to kids getting content. So happy to report that we are one of the two districts that sends our ninth graders. And L P V E C is really encouraging all member districts to do the same, so. Pat on our back.
Yeah.
Very good.
That's an add-on.
Yeah, I've just sent them this year.
So why are they sending aside from ninth grader?
So they, uh, all the other districts start their kids in tenth grade.
Okay.
So they do exploratory in tenth grade, whereas ideally you do exploratory in ninth grade. Um, and it just gives you, um, a longer period of exposure to the program.
You okay?
No, I'm fine. I gotta get up my, you know. We got an early date.
Okay.
Treatment and all that.
No worries.
Good luck.
Thank you, Ted.
Keep going.
Uh, L B F Z, board of great, I got an email just yesterday. The first meeting for me is November the seventeenth. Is that something that's online, in person? They didn't, they didn't indicate in the, in the, uh, in the email.
I can tell you what.
No?
You should ask.
I will, I just.
Yeah, you should ask.
Amy knows everything, so I.
So worse, we have the option to be in person, but, um, we are still.
I don't wanna know wherever it is, I don't wanna go, and I just.
I don't. Highly different body of people though on your board.
Either, we just were silent, so.
So just ask, Phil.
I'll find out, more to come.
Yeah.
Uh, policy, we got a meeting.
Next.
Four o'clock on the seventeen, or the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Uh. Ted's gone, building his ground, we'll miss. Um, anybody got anything from the liaisons to report?
We had an I L T meeting today, actually. Though actually, we talked a lot about the literacy program, so like, oh, this is a lot of the same stuff. Uh, hold on, let me pull up my notes I took on. Um. Principal Carrier talked about at Powder Mill how they're starting a social emotional learning curriculum. I'm sure all across our district and all the other districts in Massachusetts, or actually probably all over the country. Have found a lot of our kids are having issues with dysregulation, anxiety. Have problems now building friendships, have now problems with, uh, impulse control, with conflict resolution, all those things. So they are developing a curriculum at Powder Mill, including our zones that I know we started with them, because I've heard of them. Um, and then one, they have a certain curriculum for each grade. One will build on the next, kind of reiterating some of the stuff and then moving on. And also, as you think of, of third graders different than a sixth grader and what they can understand and accomplish. Um, it's not tiered yet, that's kind of what they're, they wanna eventually get into. Because obviously, if one kid can. Is doing fine with all that content, but someone needs more help in, say, conflict resolution, they wanna make it tiered. Um. They also talked about the summer recharge camp that we did, our first time this past summer. There were sixty participants in grades one through six. Um, they did do evaluation of the parents afterwards and there's a ton of positive feedback. Um, next year, it will be just one full week versus this year, I want to say it was three weeks with three days.
Three days.
A piece. So it was like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for three weeks total. Um, but the next year, they're gonna do one full week. Uh, but that was hosted at Powder Mill and the kids had a blast and it looked like they had a great time. Uh, we saw pictures. And then they talked about the K through six literacy plan, uh, that we bought back in, I say, she said, twenty twenty, but instituted. Uh, we did assessments this past spring and then Hill for Literacy is helping us institute that, um. And they're just talking about all the different tiers and especially with what, how you. If you're, how to get into a tier, if you say you need more help and what that constitutes exiting that when you've now reached. You don't need it anymore. And just talking to the teachers of what parts of that huge, I guess, curriculum, there's many different components to it. And we wanna make sure that everyone's using the same one, so it's a vertical. Seen Berkeley throughout the district. So we talked a lot about that, same stuff today.
Sure. Technology. John, did you guys have a technology meeting yet?
Nope, two years running, nothing.
I should have joined that committee.
You know?
Yeah, you signed up for the wrong one, bud.
Yeah, I got really lucky on that one.
Oh, so, John, maybe, you know, they have those, uh, how many days since the last injury type of boards? Maybe we need to have one of those last time we've had a.
Technology.
Technology meeting.
Be careful.
We could have lots of them. Okay, um. Old business. We okay for that, Amy?
Yeah.
Get nothing? Anybody got anything for old business? New business? Nothing I was thinking about, um, Mr. Presnel, what we were talking about before the meeting briefly, I think with, since we've got a. Policy that's up for renewal right now, looking at homeschool eligibility with athletics and extracurriculars. We had an email come through this week concerning, uh, participation of a program that's up at the high school. Can you, next time we meet, just clarify what is considered and what the def, what, what is extracurricular and what? What isn't, or is that?
I'm gonna try to, um. I'm not sure that there is a, uh, rock solid definition.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering then, if, if there is no, if there is no, just, sorry, we had, I'm sure most of you guys saw this. We had an email from, from a parent that does homeschool somebody, um, that they were informed that they would not be eligible. For the Wright Flight Education Program up at the high school, but yet in years past. They've been allowed to participate in the math science program. So, both of those are on school, after hours. Um, I guess I'm looking for, it probably makes sense to have some sort of clarification. I did reach out to the superintendent. She spoke with Mr. Presnel. Apparently, there's a question about insurance, no insurance.
Is there something, and I'm not quite sure what it is. Some component of the right flight take place during the school day and the kids get released from school.
Okay.
And, and I'm not quite sure. That's only from anecdotal information.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's also is right flight, like a teacher that, versus math sciences, uh, company that comes in.
Yeah, well, Right Flight is a nonprofit outside company that comes in. It's, that's why I'm, that's why I think it creates a little confusion. I mean.
And that's why I said it was due to the outside that he's giving free up school time.
No, no.
Kids, so it's like.
I guess I'm just looking for, and I think it's probably, now, this, if the adjustment, if we bring the policy out of subcommittee and we put it to a vote and we agree to allow this to happen, this will become a moot issue. But I think it's probably not the worst thing in the world to try to have this clarified, because until that happens, it, it, it's, it's the way that we're allowing or not allowing these, these children to be able to participate in these activities. So it probably would help us if we had some sort of clarification on that, don't you? Would you think?
Like boy scouts, girl scouts.
Yeah, I mean, it's like.
We can, we can try to.
Right.
Define the, the uh the parameter.
You all right?
I, I wicked that allergy. Something just wicked about that.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I thought it might be a good, in, in that way.
We can brainstorm on that.
That way the entire committee sort of gets this information. Anybody else have anything else for new business? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Look at this.
Ten minutes, go.
We have to take a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, Ted's not here. Pat? Yeah. John? Is John still here? Just, John said yes. Erica?
Yes.
Rob is a yes, motion passes six zero zero.